Merry Christmas, Canyon City. We're really excited to have our last city council meeting for the year of 2023 in December. I'd like to call this meeting to order police and have a roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. I'm so grateful that Alicia Swearingen from the Royal Vineyard Gorge Church is here to give her invocation. Please, all rise.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Well, Heavenly Father, we are just so grateful for your presence. And I just wanted to read a scripture out of Isaiah 26. "Lord, you establish peace for us, all that we have accomplished you have done for us. Lord, our God, other lords besides you have ruled other over us, but your name alone do we honor." And so, we honor you in our time today. Lord, I specifically pray for the families of our city, of Canyon City, this Christmas, that you would bless them and your favor would be upon them and they'd have a good holiday season. And we also pray for safety for our city and our county workers, God, that you would keep them safe over the holidays with all the extra things that go on. So bless our city and bless this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any citizens who wish to address the council? I don't see any here tonight, so we'll move on to council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to draw council member and city attention and also the audience in general intention to an article in today's Colorado Sun newspaper. It was about something happening up in the Golden area, but there's a connection to the Canyon City area. Colorado Legacy Land, who owns the Cotter Uranium Mill site here, but declared insolvency earlier this year, has also told the State Department of Natural Resources that they're insolvent when it comes to this ongoing work they need to be doing at the uranium mine near Golden. So I just wanted to let people know that, you know, there are some rather large impacts when a company takes over a site like these two sites and then is not able to fulfill their obligations. So take a look at that article. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to flag that we have a Historic Preservation Commission meeting on Wednesday, December 20th. It's rescheduled a little bit, so I wanted to make sure that the public were aware of the new date. Then I also just wanted to flag that we are planning to have a public meeting for the Red Trails Policy -- or sorry, the Red Canyon Trails Committee on January 3rd, Wednesday, at 4:00 PM, to let folks have some input in terms of where the trails will actually be located within Red Canyon Park. So we'll obviously do lots of public information outreach and ensure that folks are aware, but wanted to take this opportunity to let all of you know as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do -- the council got together since this is your last meeting, and we got a card for you and a gift certificate, and I wanted to give that to you. There's the card. I've got the gift certificate right here. The gift certificate is from one of our fine local establishments for a tattoo or body piercing of your choice.
Yes. It'll be my first.
Not quite true. It's with Rose Injectables.
Oh, I'll get spoiled rotten.
And so, it's a day for you.
Thank you.
And we're glad we can do that. And I'd like to also say, you know, I wish the general public knew how many hours that you've put in as mayor. It's really unbelievable. I'd like to say that it's countless, but it's probably more than that.
Thank you.
But it's the -- for sure, and a big thank you from all your members on council for doing the job that you've done.
Thank you, each and every one of you. I so appreciate that. Oh, man, I don't -- okay. You should have done this at the end of the meeting. That's rough. That's really rough. That means a lot. Thank you so much. You guys have been such a pleasure to work with. It's a joy, and it's so wonderful, but in the realm of politics, to be able to be and work with people who care about Canyon City so much, and we just get along well, and we're passionate, and we're amazing, and thank you. Thank you, and I'm glad that you're all here to keep things going. We do have someone else that needs some really special recognition here tonight, and I'd like to invite Chief Schick and Butch to please, both of you, come up. And I'm just really excited about this recognition tonight.
Are we on?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayors, council members. As I've said before, this is one of the things I really enjoy doing, one of the fun parts of my job. And this evening, we get to recognize one of our employees who's been with us for five years, and I will tee it up and let Chief Schick take it from here. I know he has some very good things to say about Jordan.
Madam Mayor, members of council. Madam Mayor, let me say on the record, it has been an absolute pleasure serving as your police chief. I am very honored to have come up under you. You hired me, and it's been a great three years.
Thank you, Chief.
So, thank you. Back to Jordan. Officer St. Louis is a prized gem of ours. Jordan is currently assigned to the high school as a school resource officer, and I'll tell you, Jordan has immersed himself in the curriculum. His focus every day is the security and happiness and health of all of the students, staff, and folks, and when -- his service knows no boundaries. And we have a video to demonstrate that this evening.
I'm so excited for this.
If you could just -- we're going to show a video here where Jordan is -- he's going to help teach these cheerleaders how to dance.
This is homecoming, right?
This is a homecoming. Last for us now.
This is a man who truly enjoys his job.
I've watched this several times, and I'm convinced there's a workman's comp claim if this is me.
Bravo, bravo.
In all seriousness, Jordan, he'll do anything for that school. He works and he teaches during the day, and he works with the basketball team, football team. He's coaching, so we couldn't be happier and very proud of Jordan and all that he's doing over there. Of course, they're a huge part of our community outreach, so I'm very pleased to see Jordan at the five-year mark and look forward to very -- quite a few more years.
You can see, that video is just one segment of how he just really relates with the kids. I have kiddos in high school, and I'm able to witness Jordan's connection to the kids and the mentorship that he provides them, and whether it's also on the football field, on the basketball court, everywhere. Just I just want you to know that I notice and I see it, and I'm just really grateful that these kids need every single possible person to really care about them and help uplift them, and thank you for being one of those heroes.
Thank you. Thank you for this. If I could impose upon council to join Jordan on the front of the diocese?
With dance moves?
Get a group picture?
You get all dance dances, like that? We should have coordinated this.
About to show everyone. Do a little line dance. Standing still. There we go. Scooch in, scooch in. Right in the back again. There's the future cheerleader.
Okay, here we go.
Here, baby. Excuse me. There you go. Nice.
Sounds like it's hot in here too much. For everything.
Who worked with the first folks when I ever met this town?
Was that a little kid?
Can I get a picture with council too? And would I get a picture with that guy? Can I get a picture with you too?
That's gold.
As your co-coordinator tonight, so there you go. There's a lot written there.
Be my dentist. Yeah, you're good. You have to stay here for the whole night. Go get some dinner, right? There'll be a test later. See you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on December 4th, the general government meeting on December 6th, and the special November 11th meeting for community relations, November 29th for the water committee, and December 7th for board recognition. 8B extends bid 1021 for Volt Toilet Pumping Service. 8C extends bid 1121 Waste Disposal Site. 8D extends bid 1221 Solid Waste Removal Service awarded to Republic. That is a split bid. 8E is the rest of that bid, extends bid 1221 Solid Waste Removal Service for Twin Enviro. 8F awards bid 724 to Civic Plus in an amount not to exceed $7,463. 8G awards bid 824 to Civic Plus in an amount not to exceed $12,472.08. 8H is to receive and file the monthly budget summary for October. 8I is to receive and file cash dispersments and P-card dispersments.
Thank you. Elijah, I see you're here tonight. Would you mind coming and talking to us a little bit about the software items on the agenda? I know there were some questions about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The two bids that I have before you this evening are for software from the same company, Civic Plus. One is for a reservation system, that's the Civic Rec bid that was the $7,000 bid. That will replace our current campground reservation software system that we're utilizing. It will also extend the functionality to other city departments for use in reserving city facilities, areas, and vouchers for city events. So it's going to not only replace what we have, but expand upon that. Something we're excited to offer to the citizens so that they're able to electronically reserve things. I know right now, for the park pavilions, for instance, when you reserve a pavilion for a party in the park, that's a very manual process for staff. Takes a lot of time to manage that. This would improve the functionality so that we'd be able to see, the citizens will be able to see when those pavilions are reserved and when they're available. The second bid that's before you is for department-specific website headers to be designed on our current canyoncity.org website. So the four header packages that we're bringing forward are for the police department, the economic development department, the library, and the museum. The benefit to bringing these department-specific headers to our website is it allows unique branding and custom navigation menus on each one of those department webpages. Some of the feedback that we've gotten over the years is it's very difficult to navigate throughout our website, and when we all share the same links throughout each webpage, it can get kind of convoluted. So this helps reduce that difficulty and allows some specific links and specific navigation through those departments. It will also allow the IT department to retire one of our old web servers that's currently running the library and museum websites. It's something that will greatly reduce the administrative burden on IT to move that out of the house and to Civic Plus's umbrella. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one question on each. On 7F, I'm really excited about your strategy and foresight in terms of expanding the ability of folks to be able to reserve things online. I did want to ensure that we weren't planning to change our current policy and practice of having those pavilions be available free of charge. I mean, this reservation system won't be coming with a fee or any changes like that. Is that correct?
Correct. We have the option and the ability to charge fees for different events that we can set up per event or per facility. As far as the pavilions, that's not part of this change.
Great. Thank you so much. And then my question on the second one was, I was a little confused because I believe according to our standard scope of services, it's always supposed to have an Exhibit A with a statement of work. And in this instance, I saw that it was reviewed by legal, but it doesn't have that Exhibit A, and instead, there's just a quote that doesn't provide a great deal of detail in terms of the number of edits or revisions that the website designers would be willing to do. So I was just wondering if there was a reason why we deviated from the standard practice of having an Exhibit A with a statement of work, or why this one was a bit different. Thanks.
So if I could jump in just to clarify a little bit, the quote that preceded that agreement was supposed to be attached as Exhibit A to that. That is standard that we've seen from the agreements that we put forward is any exhibit attached to our software agreements includes the quote that they give. It also has the terms and services of the software company that's linked in the language at the bottom of that quote. So this was sent forward to legal to review with that quote attached as well.
So I'll just jump in. I did not personally review this agreement, but if it has been reviewed by legal, that means it has been reviewed by my boss, either Corey or Catherine. So I would say they probably approved it as written. If you would like us to review it again, I'm happy to bring that back to the office and look at it again.
I think in this particular instance, I don't necessarily have any concerns. If we're accepting the quote, then that would be legally binding. But I do think we should be, if we're planning to use a standard contract with a standard exhibit, we should be consistent across the board with all of our contracts. And I do think it protects us a little bit more if we have statements of work that detail what our expectations are and not just the quote that, you know, it's a little more macro level than what I think your expectations of Civic Plus may be. But in this instance, I don't think we necessarily need to have it reviewed again by legal based on what's contained within the award. Thanks.
Elijah, for those reservations for our bigger events, like the Whitewater Festival and the Blossom and like the Highway 50 Yard Sale, things of that nature, is there an automatic reservation for them so they, a birthday party doesn't accidentally come and take a pavilion when we actually need the entire park?
Yes, there will be. So we'll have the ability to reserve what we would call entire facilities or such as the entire park, as opposed to the pavilions where it would block out the ability for citizens to reserve pavilions during that time.
And has that done for, like, has that done well in advance of anybody being able to have a conflict?
We will make sure that it is. Something that we have not built yet, obviously, so as soon as the software has been developed to our specifications, we'll make sure that those types of barriers that we see coming forward are handled on an as-needed case.
And is there some sort of trigger too, like if sometimes there's been Fourth of July, big Fourth of July events by other nonprofits, if they wanted to book something that was going to need a lot more attention, like extra porta-potties and maybe some, you know, street department help? Is there something that, when they try to reserve that online, that triggers all that extra information that we need?
Yes, ma'am. So for types of events that we can develop in the system, we can actually trigger events that will request different forms that may need to be filled out, or different workflows and approval that might need to go to multiple departments to approve that event, and it can be on an event-type basis. So that's again, one of those things that we'd have to develop into the software, but we do plan on doing that. One of the other major benefits that I forgot to mention was because this will be an electronic reservation system, it greatly enhances our capability to communicate to the citizens when they reserve things of this nature. For instance, if we had a closure due to weather or something like that, we can send a mass email to everybody that may have a reservation on that date and immediately be able to communicate with those citizens.
Okay.
And just going back to the dates, you know, obviously, we rely on the event organizers to let us know when next year's dates are. Once we get that information, we can put that into the system itself.
Okay. Councilmember Stein?
Sorry. It went on by itself.
That's okay. You just hop in whenever you're ready. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. Just to add on to what you were talking about, Elijah, and City Administrator Stevens, I would assume that we could, if we wanted to, design it so that any reservation that was made by a member of the public would be, that they could be given a message that it's tentative and it's to be confirmed by city staff or something to that effect.
Absolutely. There is an approval process.
Yeah, so that it wouldn't be like somebody could come in and just reserve everything for the year or whatever. And I'll just add, I do have a couple things to note on Items H and I whenever we're ready for that.
I just have one more quick question. If somebody does reserve the pavilion, and you say the general public can see, you know, what's booked, but do those who have made reservations, do they have privacy to the general public? Like, is just known to the city staff, the actual contact information?
Yes, that was one of the questions that we had asked when we demonstrated, when the company demonstrated the software for us, so that no private information of anybody that's booking those reservations will be shared to the general public.
Doesn't include their name?
Off the top of my head, honestly, I can't answer that at this moment. I need to verify, but I do know that we specifically requested that addresses and more personal information not be on the reservation nor on the permit that they print to display when they reserve a pavilion.
Our expectation is that it will show the pavilion and the time slots, and it'll just say that it's reserved or that it's open.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with that. Even if they were given a code number or some, you know, or something, that's their code number that shows us.
Yeah, and I just received a message from our public information officer, Kristy Gotham, and she said it will just show up the blocked-out times.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, thanks. All right, back to you. Councilmember Tracy?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things in regard to Item 8H. On digital pages 64 through 66, we have the sales tax collections, and I just think it's interesting to note, I did a little arithmetic on that. And on just the general sales tax collections for the general fund, with unaudited numbers as of the end of October, we're only 145,000 behind the full year budgeted amount, which looks really healthy as far as sales tax collections. On the next page, sales tax collections for 2A, we're actually a little ahead, I think, of the full year amount, as of the end of October, a little bit ahead of the full year amount that was budgeted for this year. And then in regard to, which is a little different, of course, water operating revenue on the next page for our Water Enterprise Fund, things are also looking good there, that the amount collected in revenue for the water fund through the end of October is about 173,000 ahead of the full year budget. So I just wanted to point that out as being a good sign, I think, for the city being in good financial shape. And then on Item I, I wanted to just, I get reminded pretty regularly when I look at cash dispersments for the city, how much money our electric, how high our electric bills are for city government. And this, of course, on this particular December 5th through December 18th, it says it's seven out of 11 of the electric service accounts that we pay to Black Hills Energy, and it's over $27,000. And it just reminds me that it's important that we have budgeted, in my opinion, important that we have budgeted to do an analysis of the poles and wires this coming year. And I think too, it's important, and we should continue to talk about this, to have our energy advisory committee meet on a more regular basis. We have not been meeting for the past several months, and I think we lose some institutional memory there as a committee when we don't meet periodically. And certainly, I think there will be things for us to talk about in the near future, so just wanted to make that comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going back to the park reservation for just a minute, I just, since it's a new system, I think it might behoove us to proactively reach out to those organizations that do normally use the entirety of the park rather than waiting for them to come to us because they won't necessarily know that they'll need to tell us so far in advance. So I would just recommend that we go ahead and reach out to FC App and RG Rio and all of the entities that we know typically have those annual events.
Yeah, and anything that we have for next year that we already have reserved in our calendar system, we'll transfer that over.
Not, well, the Blossom is, but not the Whitewater.
Really? I thought they switched it to the same third weekend.
The latest I heard, the weekend depends on when Canyon Rental will be available for them to rent all of their stuff. Yeah.
But yes, we'll make sure that those entities know.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm seeing no more comments from council. I would like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda and the agenda approval. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda and agenda as written.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion or further questions? The call for police. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Ryan, do you have an administrator's report for us today?
We have the written reports in the packets. One thing that I think I neglected to put into this administrator's report is we have completed the refresh of the city's website, so we do have a new-looking website. So I know Kristy Gotham and our IT department put a lot of work into that, and I think it looks great. They did a good job working with Civic Plus to do that refresh. We've been using the same format for a few years now, and it's nice to have a refresh every now and again. That's included as part of our contract.
Awesome. Can you give an update about the new method laundry? That's kind of an important one.
Yes, so new method laundry, we're continuing to move forward. We're working on the RFP. Hope to have that out in January. We did receive some news of a little bit of a setback from the State Historic Preservation Office. They have some concerns about how removal of that building may affect the historic designation for the Main Street. Economic Development Manager Rick Harmon and our museum director Lisa Stoots are both working on that, along with our attorneys, CDPHE, and the Environmental Protection Agency to coordinate with SHPO regarding those concerns. And they will actually be presenting, Rick and Lisa will be presenting to the Historic Preservation Commission on Wednesday. There's a draft letter that Rick has been working on, including edits as recently as today, that will be presented to the Certified Local Government Historic Preservation Commission to get their input and feedback and hopefully a vote of support for what we're trying to do to remove that building and protect the buildings to either side of it.
Thank you. I also saw on your written report about the economic development staff working with a consultant that you met that could maybe offer some really good business classes, and just wanted to put out there that one of my new responsibilities on the Chamber of Commerce Board Chamber of Commerce Board is the creation of business education classes. And would love to be a partner in helping to work together to make that happen.
Oh, that, that would be great. Yes. You know, we, I, I went to a conference in November, met a consultant that specializes in merchandising and window displays. And we've been having discussions with, with that consultant about potentially doing some work and working with our local businesses and not just Main Street, but all of our small town, small businesses in town.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, it's very exciting. I think that, that we're ripe and ready to have that happen here. Any other questions from council or clarification needed?
I do, I do have a question, Madam Mayor. The, on, on the new method laundry, I was looking for the reference. I didn't see it. I didn't, wasn't able to pull it up here. But I, I believe in your report, you said that, that you were trying to get in contact with an official within the State Historic Preservation Office, their engineer or architect
Architect, yes, sir.
Architect. And we're unable to do so. And you, because of that, you're using an alternate strategy to deal with the situation. What, can you share a little bit with us about what the, what the communication problem is?
So far, we have not been able to connect or schedule a coordinated meeting. So that, Rick has been working on that. I, I don't know specifically what those communication challenges have been, but.
Do you know, we are talking to a live body?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, good luck. If you need, do you desire a public official there at that meeting?
I don't know that we need it yet. I think there, there may be some discussion about that at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, let us know if we need to.
Appreciate that.
Have that presence. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and move on in our agenda. We have item 10A. This is a second reading for Ordinance 17, series of 2023. And this is amending sections of the Chapter 3.13 of the Municipal Code for Use Tax Reporting and Auditing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a second reading. We've not received any additional public comment. Staff would recommend passing on second reading, or approval on second reading. We did send out frequently asked questions or a tax use, a use tax guide to council for their review. We will be posting that on the website. We do view that as a living document. And as we receive any additional questions, we'll add that to the document.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan at this time? Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a number of questions about that FAQ. I don't think that we need to go into them in, in this public meeting, but I would appreciate the opportunity to just sit down with you and Director Nordike because I think parts of it could potentially be, some of the examples may, may inadvertently cause confusion. So I just appreciate that opportunity sometime in the next week or so. Thanks.
Always opportunities for that, don't you think? I'd hope to get together. Yeah.
But I think it's important to note that we appreciate the FAQ being provided, but that there might still need to be additional work being done on it.
Very good. Okay.
Absolutely.
I'd like to entertain a motion if we're ready. Councilmember Dennehy?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt on second reading, Ordinance 17, series of 2023.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote? Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, it officially passes. And thank you, Amy, for continuing that work to make sure it's done to its best ability. Item 10B now is also a second reading. This is for ordinance 18 of 2023. This is for removing the sunset provision in section 10.10.080 in the municipal code adopting a review process for the UTV regulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to apologize. We had an incorrect version of the ordinance in the original packet. That has been corrected. This version does include the language regarding Fremont County and revisiting the ordinance if Fremont County were to approve the use of UTVs within the county. We have not received any additional public comment regarding this ordinance, and staff would recommend approval on second reading.
Thank you. Any questions? Looks like we have Councilmember Schmisher and then Tracy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question for our attorney. Is there any special way that we need to make this motion, given that the packet that we received didn't contain the correct ordinance? Thank you.
So as long as, that's a great question. As long as you're approving the ordinance as amended or as most recently provided, I guess would be the most accurate way to approve it. So making a motion to approve the ordinance as corrected on X date would be my recommendation on language.
Okay, so maybe as approved on first reading, assuming that we don't have any amendments to it. Thanks.
Councilmember Tracy?
I'm ready to make that motion, if that's okay. Move for approval of.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry?
Yes, let's do it.
Move for approval on second reading and adoption of ordinance number 18, the December 4th version that was approved on December 4th.
Second?
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just want to say thanks again to Chief and to your team that worked really, really hard on this ordinance and, and the execution of it during that trial period. Okay, I'll call a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we are. Last item on the agenda, you're going to get home to read bedtime stories to Finian tonight. This is going to be good. Or whatever else that was on your agenda. Okay, this is our last item as mentioned, 10C introduction and adoption by title only. This is for Resolution 17, series of 2023, entitled A Resolution Leveing General Property Taxes for the Year 2023 to Help Defray the Costs of Government for the City of Canyon City, Colorado for the 2024 Budget Year. Ryan, I think we need to go into a lot of detail on this one because this is a tou, this is a tough one this year because of the property tax issues that we.
It is. So this is Resolution 17. This sets our mills, the mill levy for the city at 2.892 mills. That's an anticipated revenue of 553,669.84. That's an increase over last year of 28,647.83. The anticipated revenue when we did the budget, and this was before the state legislature came in and made some corrections after Proposition HH failed on the ballot, the anticipated revenue prior to that, we were expecting that, those mill levies and that revenue to be 603,000 and some change. That is what was certified in August by the assessor through the process that state legislature did through their special session. That reduced the mill levy, or not the mill levy, but the, the property values and the assessment rate to a point where, you know, what, the, the increase will be to that 553,669.84. That is roughly a 5.4% increase over the property tax rates for last year, which is in line with inflation. And staff would recommend approving Resolution 17 as written.
Ryan, do you have any justifications beyond just keeping up with inflation for this increase of $28,000?
When we wrote the budget, we had anticipated using the property tax increase for property taxes as some of the matching funds for the COPS grant. We did receive the COPS grant. That's an additional five officers through the Department of Justice. And, you know, that helps to offset those matching funds that we would need for that, for that grant.
Okay, anything from council on this? Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. I had asked a question earlier about this and kind of was wondering to myself at least whether we should just adjust the mill levy so that the revenues would not increase at all this year. And I, I can see both sides of it. Part of it is that this is, relatively speaking, not a very large part of anybody's property tax bill because our mill levy for the city is so much lower than for other special taxing districts, whether it's the schools, fire departments, so forth. And likewise, it is a pretty small percentage of our total revenue budget in the city. But on the other, other hand, when there's an opportunity as a, as a taxing entity to try to maintain some control of that, then there, there is a reason to advocate for just keeping the revenues at the same level. But I can go either way on. I'm interested to see if anyone else has anything to comment on that.
I mean, I'm looking at it like maybe, like a dollar, just short of $2 per household difference.
It's more the principle than the dollars.
Right.
But I, I'm open to just whatever other folks think about that.
Yeah, I agree. It's a tough one. For like a $1.65, $1.65 to get five more cops in boots on the ground, it seems like a pretty good investment. It's hard when we have just as much inflation as everybody else does, but it's a tough call. Yeah, go ahead.
I know we say that and it's, it's minimum amount, but on the other hand, there's other districts within, in our area that's also is raising mill levies. And, and I, and there's probably a few more that are down the road or looking at maybe raising some. And I think we really have to keep that in mind as well because, you know, we, we can say it's a little bit, but a little bit by us, a little bit by somebody else, and a little bit by somebody else. And pretty soon, the people are paying a lot. And, and that's where, that's where I have one of my biggest problems is, you know, everybody always says it's just a little. But everybody wants that, that little, that little piece of the pie. And pretty soon, the pie is gone for our taxpayers. But, and that's all I have to say.
Well, I think let's, let's, we ought to have a clarification that ours is a very little piece of that pie. Whereas like the fire department, the school district and the other entities, it's the parks and rec, that's a very big piece of that pie in their decision making. We have Councilmember Schmisher and the Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Administrator Stevens, Mayor Smith alluded to the fact that the COPS grant wouldn't be feasible if we didn't keep the levy the same?
No, I'm not saying it's not feasible. I mean, I think we could find that way. I'm just saying that it could be.
So I would just like to hear from the city administrator as to whether or not we would be able to find a way or if a change in this would potentially impact our ability to find the matching funds for the COPS grant. Thanks.
I think it would, you know, it would affect what we absorb and what would have to come out of reserves.
Okay, but you don't see any, any issue with moving forward with matching funds for the COPS grant if we did adjust the mill levy to keep the revenue the same?
No, I think, you know, we, we may have to do some budget amendments and things like that in the future.
Okay. Because I, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Tracy and Councilmember Dennehy's points that every little bit does matter. And it is in, at heart, the principle of the thing. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the, we're looking at the absolute value of the, what the mill levels will bring in to us. What, so do you know offhand what the mill levy, mill levy amount was for last year?
I believe it was, it was 2.893.
Yeah, that sounds correct. It's, it's, that last digit moves based off of abatements. So it's usually just making an adjustment based off the abatement.
So I, I would, I would say, you know, given, given that, that particular piece of information, the discussion that we've had so far is, is right on point. It is, it is a concern that, you know, rising inflation, although we may be able to pass rules and implement policies that keep up with inflation, those on fixed income cannot. And often wages and income for our citizens does not keep up with inflation. But given the fact that we're not adjusting the mill, the mill rate, the number of mills that we would be charging, it, it seems to me that, that inflation is a bad deal. But, but if we're not raising our mill levy rate, I think that I'm, I'm good with what we've got.
Well, it looks like we're actually, our rate's less for 2024 technically.
It's technically less, .001 less.
Yeah. We have Councilmember Worthington next in the queue.
My energy hat back on, in the sense that we have something that we were talking about earlier as far as doing the analysis of wires and poles. And that's a fairly big amount that we have in this year's upcoming budget. And I think for the small tiny amount that this is, I think that it's important that, as to what we're going to accomplish, what we have in the budget now. And I think this small amount will help us to continue on down the path of perhaps saving our customers money, more money later. So I realize that $28,000 is probably not what's going to cover the analysis, but it is one of the pieces that does make that possible. So I'm in, as much as I hate to raise anybody's taxes, I think that this is a justified amount.
Okay, we've heard from many members. Anybody else want to contribute in the discussion? Well, probably need to take a vote on it then. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 17, series of 2023, a resolution levying general property taxes for the year 2023 to help defray the costs of government for the City of Canyon City, Colorado for the 2024 budget year.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Ryan, do you have any other final comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think we, we've covered most of it. I, you know, what was originally proposed was a 15% increase after state legislature acted. We're looking at a 5.4% increase, which, again, every, every year, you know, we, well, I say every year we, we see increases, but actually in 2022, we saw a decrease in property taxes. That, that year, it was actually a decrease of about 2.3%, I think.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Nay.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Nay.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. That is the final item on the last council meeting for 2023 and for myself as well. This meeting is, okay.
I would just like to take one last minute to say, Ashley, thank you.
Thank you.
You, my first term, you as the mayor, you have made council a very enjoyable place to come. And I can say without doubt, you have been outstanding. And you represent Canyon City unbelievably. I know it's in your heart, but you were a fantastic person. And I just want to say thank you.
It means the world to me. Thank you all so much. This meeting is adjourned.